I'd like to call this September 23rd, 2019 council meeting to order. If you will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Starcher.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hefinger.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular council meeting on September 9th, 2019, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second, discussion on the approval of the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and will meet again in two weeks. We have several items that we continue to talk about. Health, safety, and sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report tonight meeting. There is a meeting on the Fire District Committee in October. I believe it's October 22nd. Is that correct, Mayor? I think it's sometime in October. I'll update you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, but I will be scheduling a meeting and it'll be a short meeting really so we can get the comprehensive plan moving forward. So trying to schedule a meeting next couple of weeks to get that going.
Thank you, Streets and Sewer Works. Water Utilities, Mr. Starcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, no meeting scheduled this time.
Thank you, Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, but we do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow immediately following the budget meeting, so approximately 6:30, 7 o'clock. Trying to bring people into your budget meeting, John.
There's only a few left, so don't miss them. There's only a few left. Thank you. Request for council action, we have a few for finance. We have 19-164 budget amendments, 19-165 modified police record clerk and parking enforcement attendant job descriptions, 19-166 fiscal year 18 chip grant payment to 1661 Dan Lee Drive in Brunswick, 19-167 fiscal year 18 chip grant payment for 3877 Miller Drive in Brunswick, and 19-168 then and now for Trident Insurance Services for the Law Department. Emerging Technologies Committee has won, and 19-169 adopted cybersecurity incident response policy and acquire insurance. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The parking deck construction outside of City Hall, as you all know, is underway now. It started the week of Labor Day. The long-term lots that are available in the city are the lot next south of Castle Noel entrance, the Feckley Lot on the north side of Time Two, the County Courthouse parking deck, the extension of the county administration lot off of East Liberty Street, and the parking lot between West Liberty and West Washington where the Huntington Bank drive-through is located. The Muni Court Lot is available on evenings and weekends, but not during the day when the court is in session, and we established three-hour lots for customers to have adequate spaces beside the streets for what's left of the lot between Sully's and Porter's, so that would be between the fence and Liberty Street, as well as the entire lot at the southeast corner of Elmwood and West Liberty. The utility drop boxes have been moved to the municipal court lot, so they're accessible even while the court's in session. There's a space designated for that. We're still working with the post office to get their box moved out of the construction zone. They said that could take up to 30 days or about two weeks. And now, the mini library that was next to the mailboxes and the utility drop was moved to the three-hour lot at the southeast corner of Elmwood and West Liberty. We established a 15-minute parking area along West Friendship Street immediately next to the Historical Society Building for customers to come in and out pretty easily. And we established two handicap spots just outside the northwest doors at the entrance to City Hall closest to West Friendship and North Elmwood Street. The farmer's market continues each Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. until mid-October. And last but not least, the state of the city was presented to the Medina Area Chamber of Commerce on September 3rd at 11:30 at Williams on the Lake, and also the council on September 9th, and it's now available on the city website, on Medina TV, on Facebook, and on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to remind everyone that the city has a levy renewal and increase for our emergency services levy. It funds the life support team. It's a partnership between the city of Medina, Medina Hospital, and the two townships, Medina and Motville Townships. We're asking for a renewal and increase because we haven't had an increase on this in 20 years. I've got a slide up for those watching at home. An ambulance back in 99 cost $87,500. Today, they're $187,000. On the next slide, we talk about some of the other lifesaving technology. A LifePak 10 cardiac monitor in 1999 was $8,000. The LifePak 15 cardiac monitors that they have today are $30,000 apiece. Again, we haven't had an increase in this levy, and there's no inflationary increases on property taxes, so for 20 years, we've had to get by on what we had then. We need this increase. I appreciate your support. On a personal level, on the cardiac monitors, I can tell you, I mean, I've had a loved one picked up with that, and, you know, these are the people, these are the men and women that come in when you're having a really bad day, when you or somebody you love needs their help. You want the best people there, and that's what we have. They've been rated Gold Plus by the Heart Association. It's a wonderful service, and they do a great job, and I would ask for your support. On the final slide, we explain why we're asking for a renewal and increase. Instead of doing that as one thing, the state has phased out their subsidy of property tax levies, so on the existing levy, we will be able to maintain it by doing the renewal, and then the increase is separate. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Chief Kenny, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, and Mrs. Marshall, the Economic Development Director. Just a side note, today's a very special day. It's her birthday, so everybody should wish her happy birthday today.
I'm spending it.
Happy birthday.
I think it's her 25th birthday. Yes. Ms. Marshall.
And I can't think of a better way to spend it than being at a council meeting.
I can't either. This is great, amongst friends.
So, just one item to note for council and the public, our Made in Medina County Manufacturing Expo is set for Friday, October 4th, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Medina County Fairgrounds Community Center located at 735 Lafayette Road. The event will start at 8:00 a.m. with breakfast and networking, and then at 9:30 a.m. we will have a keynote presentation from John Ratzenberger, who is an actor and manufacturing advocate. Most people remember him as Cliff, the mailman from Cheers, but then he also is the voice of many characters in the various Pixar movies, and then he's a huge manufacturing advocate and started his own show on the Travel Channel. Keynote tickets are $40, and you can purchase them online at www.madinedinacounty.com. I left all that information in council's mailboxes, so you could look for that. We also have these postcards. And then the exhibit hall will open free to the public starting at 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and right now, we have about 55 manufacturing companies and a little over 500 students that are registered, and this year, we are adding robotics showcase with 12 different schools within Medina County that are participating. Our Madinah County's mission is to raise awareness and educate the residents, students, and businesses as to the economic importance and career opportunities of our manufacturing industry, and we hope that you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item to note, our Forestry Department will begin tree planting the second week in October at various locations throughout town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick update for council and the public on the building department's activities. The first eight months of this year has been extremely busy with no foreseeable slowdown. This includes both residential and commercial construction projects. In mid-August, we're still issuing swimming pool permits. From January 1st to August 31st, the department issued 1,247 construction permits. This is an increase from the 2018 numbers. The month of August alone, 31 days, the reinvestment into the community includes $1,030,000 in residential projects and $4.4 million in commercial projects. The total of both residential and commercial reinvestment, again, for just the month of August alone, was $5,430,000. These reinvestment dollars for the month of August does not include any large new projects, but hundreds of smaller projects like additions, basements, remodels, outdoor decks, interior and exterior alterations, and so forth. This ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. As everyone knows, the South Elmwood Bridge project did get underway. To date, we've been able to do our work without closing West Smith. That is going to end, it looks like, next Monday, the 30th, is when West Smith will close. Working with the contractor, though, we think we can limit the amount of time that West Smith has closed to much less than we had originally anticipated. I also wanted to note, last meeting, council passed a grant application for the FAA for North-South Taxway, and tonight, we have our State of Ohio grant application for that on the agenda. That project has been awarded. We had a pre-construction meeting last week, and it looks like they're going to be starting here next week with completion within a month or so. That extension project will be complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first ordinance on tonight's agenda will be dealing with the annual city auction if that passes. We're scheduled for Saturday, October 12th, 2019, at the City Garage. Thank you.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and petitions, there are none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public, we have been at the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speaker should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting, as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Mrs. Walker?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, my name is Pat Walker. I live at 523 East Friendship Street in the city of Medina. I wanted to inform the people of the city of Medina, council is probably already aware that the Savior Courthouse Committee had started an initiative petition in order to get on the ballot, the November 2019 ballot, a statement that the citizens of Medina would have a vote before the city paid any money for the courthouse project, which, at the present time, is the tearing down of the 1969 courthouse, the tearing down of the back of the 1841 courthouse, and then the rebuilding of a courthouse that's roughly $38 million. Right now, the contract has already been in place with the county commissioners for the architects, and that's $2.66 million. Unfortunately, we only had six days to collect signatures, but in that six days, we got 690 valid voters of the city of Medina to sign the petition to say that they wanted to put this on the ballot. There were 1,017 people who signed the petition. Some of those were not living in the city of Medina. Some of those, the board couldn't decide what their signature was, and a few other reasons on that. But I would definitely, oh, so anyway, so we filed in the Ohio Supreme Court to get 10 additional days for collecting signatures. The Ohio Supreme Court did not agree with that, and the other item in the filing was the invalidation of ordinance 98-19, which is the ordinance the council had passed for paying for part of the expenses for the architect and the construction services manager. The Supreme Court said that they were not the court to hear that. They did not express any opinion on the validity of the ordinance. But I wanted to make sure that people know what the status is, and also, we've been asked whether or not we would have a countywide initiative, and there is no ability in the Ohio to have a countywide initiative. Unless you have a charter, we do not have a charter in the Medina County, so there is no ability to do that. But I do urge council to look at this issue. Council, when they signed the contract, fortunately put in the contract with the county, that council can sign a statement saying they want to get out of the contract, and they can without any penalty, they just have to pay the county for what expenses had incurred up to that point. And I'd urge you to look at that again. 690 people who have been certified by the board as voters of the city of Medina have said they want to vote on this before the city spends money on that project. If you'd like to hear more about what the project is, the Medina County Commissioners have set up a meeting Thursday, October 3rd, at 6:30 p.m. at the Buffalo Creek Retreat, which is part of the Medina Parks. That's at 8708 Hubbard Road in Seville, and I suggest everybody attend. It was set up by the county commissioners, particularly for the elected officials in Medina County, the council people, the township trustees, but obviously, since all the elected officials will be there, it is a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. And just to follow up on some of her comments, there's been ongoing meetings, of course, with respect to the architect and the design of the building, and they're still working through a lot of the issues that they don't have solved. In fact, there was a meeting here at City Hall with the various Historic Preservation Board, the CDC, and others to discuss the courthouse, and changes have been made to date regarding the aesthetics of it. I think everybody here in council and everybody in the city of Medina, of course, does not want the square to be modified so that the look is different because we understand the importance of what we have and why we need to have the look remain the same. So, that's still ongoing. I think on October 3rd, there'll be more discussion regarding the current status of the design of the courthouse and the aesthetics of the courthouse, where they stand. They don't really have any drawings yet because they're not that far, but they're still moving forward with respect to the size and the cost because that still hasn't been decided on yet because they're still trying to debate of what that's going to be. And of course, our position is in the city, of course, we only have so much money, so our portion of it will, of course, be limited by the amount of money that we have to be able to put into it. So, that's still ongoing. We don't know the numbers yet. Anybody else that wishes to address council at this time?
Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 143-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for the auction, sale or disposal of city equipment and vehicles no longer in use.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause requested I move to add at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and ordinance. Mr. Pacoli, can you just update us again on the sale?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual city auction. Appreciate the consideration and approval of the emergency clause. Normally, we would wait for the allotted time, however, the auctioneer has the Saturday, October 12th, open, and it works well with our schedule as we have staff coming in for a carpet project here at City Hall so we can go back and forth. So again, for our annual city auction for October 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 143-19 passes six zero.
For resolution 144-19, I'd ask Mrs. Marshall to come to the front for a resolution.
This is your birthday present.
John's going to sing to you.
I doubt that. That's not going to happen. Okay, we have a resolution here. We have resolution number 144-19. It's a resolution proclaiming October 4th, 2019, as Made in Medina County Day. This is a good day, too, better than your birthday, maybe. I don't know. Whereas, the mayor and Medina City Council desire to acknowledge the investments and contributions made by local manufacturers to the economy of Medina County and to show their dedication to maintaining a friendly business climate. And whereas, Medina County is home of nearly 300 manufacturing companies who employ nearly 9,000 workers making products that are sold throughout the world. And whereas, we respect all those who proudly stand behind the goods and services made in the city of Medina and Medina County, and honor those who continually invest in manufacturing innovations. And whereas, manufacturing is the cornerstone of Medina County economy, and we commend and support this important industry. And whereas, the industry will be celebrated during the Made in Medina County Manufacturing Expo being held on October 4th, 2019, to showcase products manufactured in Medina County and to raise awareness and educate residents, students, and businesses as to the economic importance and career opportunities offered by the manufacturing industry. Now therefore, be resolved by the mayor and the council of the city of Medina, Ohio, that they hereby proclaim October 4th, 2019, to be Made in Medina County Day. That this resolution shall take effect, full force and effect, from and immediately after the passage and signature by the mayor.
Moved to approve, resolution 144-19.
Second.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 144-19 passes six zero.
Resolution 147-19, a resolution authorizing the application for grant assistance from the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation, for funding under the Ohio Airport Grant Program for the extension of the North-South Taxway at Medina Municipal Airport.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned previously, this is the state grant, the state portion of the grant to pay for construction, as well as construction administration and the ALP plan update. This state grant pays for 5% of the cost. The FAA grant that council passed at the last meeting pays for 90% of that cost, and the city picks up the other 5%.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 148-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into task order number two through the agreement with Delta Airport Consultants for the professional services at the Medina Municipal Airport relative to the extension of the North-South Taxway.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is regarding the same project, the extension of North-South Taxway, and this is the fees for Delta Airport Consultants to do the construction administration and ALP plan update for that project. As previously mentioned, the two grants combined pay for 95% of this cost.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do this annually. We bid this just to see where we can get the best price. We also wanted to get in earlier this year, so that's why we're in September doing it for the end of the year, so we'll be ready in January without the emergency clause. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 145-19 passes six zero.
Ordinance 146-19, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 12020 F-150 with F-series four-wheel-drive cab and chassis and utility bed from Montrose Ford for the Water Department.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the F-150 pickup truck will replace a 2006 pickup truck that will be reassigned to the Public Buildings Department, which has a 2000 GMC that is going to be decommissioned. And we had a request for the second vehicle, is a cabin chassis with the utility bed mounted on it. We're moving more towards the utility bodies as they seem to be more efficient for the service department, and this truck will replace a 2004 truck that will be decommissioned.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 146-19 passes six zero.
Resolution 147-19, a resolution authorizing the application for grant assistance from the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation, for funding under the Ohio Airport Grant Program for the extension of the North-South Taxway at Medina Municipal Airport.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned previously, this is the state grant, the state portion of the grant to pay for construction, as well as construction administration and the ALP plan update. This state grant pays for 5% of the cost. The FAA grant that council passed at the last meeting pays for 90% of that cost, and the city picks up the other 5%.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Resolution 147-19 passes six zero.
Ordinance 148-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into task order number two through the agreement with Delta Airport Consultants for the professional services at the Medina Municipal Airport relative to the extension of the North-South Taxway.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is regarding the same project, the extension of North-South Taxway, and this is the fees for Delta Airport Consultants to do the construction administration and ALP plan update for that project. As previously mentioned, the two grants combined pay for 95% of this cost.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 148-19 passes six zero.
Ordinance 149-19, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 12020 Chevrolet 5500 HD LDF
Ordinance 149-19, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 12020 Chevrolet 5500 HD LDF diesel dump truck from National Auto Fleet Group to be used in the Parks Department.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would note that this is a 5500 HD LCF that's being purchased through the Sourcewell contract that the city is a member of. This unit will replace a 2004 F-350 dump truck that was identified for replacement through our 2019 budgeting process. We've asked for the emergency clause as the company that quoted it confirmed that their quote is only good for 30 days. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. A D is better than a, C is better than a D any day, I guess. Thanks for that correction. It's important. Mr. Shields?
I need to amend my motion to include the emergency clause.
My second will also include the emergency clause.
Is there any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the adoption, call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 149-19 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 150-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a right-of-way agreement with the Wheeling and Lake Erie Railway Company relative to the South Elmwood Bridge Project.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. That South Elmwood Bridge project that we mentioned is under construction. The railroad has requested that we enter into this agreement with them. While we're not doing any work on railroad facilities, a portion of this project does encroach into the railroad's right-of-way. They're willing to allow us to do that with signing this agreement.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance 150-19 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 151-19, an ordinance remanding ordinance Number 195-18 passed December 10th, 2018, amendments to the 2019 budget.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first two are a pass-through. We are happy to have received a donation from the Rotary for Camera at the 9/11 Memorial. The third one is rearranging the way we're paying our share of capital outlays at the rec center. And finally, we have an addition, additional appropriation for high grass. The way that works is when people have, don't mow their grass, the Service Department gives them an opportunity to take care of that. If they don't, then we take care of it and bill them for it. And we've had more of that this year than we'd budgeted for.
Thank you. Any further comments on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 151-19 passes 6-0.
Council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to remind people, I think there's still a few days left that you could register to vote if you're not already registered. We've got a little over a month to go before the election day is up. There is going to be early voting also, starting at the election board. Just also a reminder that for the gentlemen that are running for reelection on this dais, some of them oppose, some of them not, this is a nonpartisan office. So, and I can honestly say, I, you know, maybe a couple, but most of the people up here, I couldn't tell you if they were Democrats or Republicans. And that's the beauty of having a nonpartisan office because of the decisions that we make. All of us, I honestly feel this in my heart of hearts, that the decisions we make is, we're making for the betterment of the city of Medina. So with that in mind, just be kind to one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starcher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to follow up on Mr. Durham's explanation of the LST levy earlier. We have the best ambulance service available. They're gold-rated by the Cardex Association. It's worth every penny, I think, that we pay, and we haven't had an increase in 20 years. So I just encourage everyone to vote yes on that levy. Thank you.